Late, I got hung up out there in the lobby for a few minutes. Anyway, I'll go ahead and call the work session to order and we'll move to item one quickly, the discussion by the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board bylaws and the Dias Triangle property. So, Jimmy?
Yeah.
You have someone to introduce?
Let's see, all's here from the Environmental Advisory Board. Is Amy here? There you are. I've got several folks here, it looks like. If y'all want, you can maybe step up to the mic and we can just kind of go back and forth. I'll go through. Just find this real quick. My email, in case anybody has questions for you. Basically, the Environmental Advisory Board has two items to bring forward before council for discussion. One was just some adjustments to -- I'm sorry. I thought we had some -- I don't have the -- oh, there I am. Some adjustments to the bylaws of that organization. And I don't know if I can get that okay. All right, so the adjustments to the bylaws, one was that members need to be residents of Fairhope. Have the board will consist of nine members, and members may be nominated by the mayor, city council, or by other members. Members will be appointed by the city council. A member with unwarranted absence from three regular meetings shall have resigned their appointment. So, one of the issues, I think, that they've had, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, on the Environmental Advisory Board, they had some haphazard, I guess, attendance, and it's hard to always have a quorum, although we did have a quorum at the last meeting, but, you know, if you're only meeting once a month and you don't have a quorum, it makes it really hard to have any business traction or anything conducted. So, really, this is just to clean up a few items they want to propose this to us, and I don't have an issue with what is being proposed. Let's see. Any other major points, Gary, on that?
No.
Okay, yeah, so, it's really just setting that at nine members, Fairhope residents, and if you don't attend, you know, three meetings, then they basically will effectively consider your seat open and seek to reappoint someone else. So, that's the issue on the bylaws. The next item from the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board was a resolution drafted in relation to the Dias Triangle Park, and this is just essentially their recommendation for how we should proceed on this, and I have, everybody has been provided a copy via email, so you have an electronic copy of this, and I can hit the highlights on this as well. Resolution to best serve the citizens of Fairhope and the intent of the parkland designation for the 109 acres known as the Dias Triangle. The Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board recommends the following four steps implemented by the city of Fairhope. Number one was to prepare a natural resource inventory of the entire site, and that's basically a list of the different plants and their ecological functions. I had reached out, as well as Jim Horner, we reached out to Gina Todia about getting an update on a quote for that, and she has actually recently prepared the baseline inventory report and has done this for the Triangle Conservancy. So, reached out to that organization, I left a voicemail for one of their members today just to follow up with them and see if they wouldn't mind sharing that with the city. That's the first step, regardless of what direction we go in. I think we would have to have that inventory report of just the plants and trees on that site. The next item from the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board was just to have different site development alternatives and then eventually select a preferred alternative. And that would, you know, again, you would have to have that natural resource inventory in advance of knowing what you have, but they wanted the city to come up with three viable site plans consistent with the parkland designation on that site, and then determine what route to do. So, for example, Robert, you know, bike trails would be one, walking trails, I guess, would be another option. I know botanical garden had been mentioned in the past, but to come up with different site plans. Okay, number three was to restore the Dias Triangle and develop the Dias Triangle outdoor recreation experience. And then the fourth was consider conservation and protection options. So, I think there was also an item for an interim, and maybe that is what the third is, was to possibly have an interim management component. That might be the next step that we need to consider. And Jim, did you speak with Gina on that as well today?
Yeah.
And she gave a ballpark range in the 10,000 to 15,000 amount to basically manage that.
She would have to bring a forester onboard to, you know, put together a fire proposal. I don't know if you all can hear that or not, but an interim maintenance plan, because right now, the property is somewhat overgrown, you know, it honestly needs a prescribed burn on a portion of that, at least the longleaf portion, and Gina Todia could come up with that management plan along with a forester, registered forester, to come in and present to us a plan for managing it while we determine what to best use that property for. And I think, and the last was, you know, considering the conservation and protection options, and of course, we have several different scenarios there that we can consider. But regardless of what designation we ultimately determine, the Environmental Advisory Board felt that the city does need a qualified third-party conservation organization involved in the site development and the management, just to ensure that we're handling everything properly. So, I think if y'all would spend some time reviewing that again, and is there anything, Amy crafted this resolution, is there anything that I'm leaving out that's of key importance that I should be highlighting?
I would just emphasize that the point here was to kind of separate energy steps so that we could...
Hey, let me interrupt for a minute. I'm going to have to ask everybody that's speaking publicly to come to the podium. I'm sorry, we can't hear you and the public can't hear you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that the point of this resolution is to break this idea up into these incremental steps. It's just to get past some of these historical sticking points that we've had and really get the ball rolling, get this process moving. That's really all I wanted to add. I think the last time this came up, the idea of a conservation easement kind of stalled the whole thing, and we're recommending that, hey, we can put that off until last. But everybody does agree, you know, just move forward on the things that we agree with, which everybody agrees they want to park. Everybody agrees we want to offer some kind of public utility, some kind of green space use of this park. So, why not get moving on that and then figure out at the end, once we have it, with the ecological endpoint, the appropriate endpoint and the value determined, and then it's built, then decide, do we need to put a deed restriction on it? Do we need to leave it as zoned parkland, or is it appropriate for a conservation easement? But that doesn't need to hold up the process.
Right, and that was the, I guess, the ultimate opinion of the Environmental Advisory Board, was that we can start the ball rolling on all these other items that we know we're going to have to have, and the structure of how we hold the property can be determined on the back end. It does not necessarily have to be the first thing that we determine. So, the plant inventory or the natural resource inventory, I was prepared to ask the council to consider moving forward with that, but, you know, when I reached out to Ms. Todia and she informed me that she had recently prepared one, I thought, well, we'd be better off to just ask the Triangle Conservancy if they'd be willing to share that with us. I don't see why they wouldn't, but no sense in reinventing the wheel if she's recently done it and they've paid for it. So, that's really primary thing, and I know it's not a lot to be the only item on the work session agenda, but that's what we had to present.
I do have another recommendation along the lines of what you just said. After, I haven't reviewed the assessment that she has prepared yet.
I haven't seen it yet.
But assuming that it doesn't take the extra step of proposing an interim management plan and a long-term management plan, I would kind of recommend, maybe you guys consider stepping into that next, so you can get the ball rolling on protecting the ecosystem. And then, you know, once you've got the plan in place, then start looking at the compatible recreation assets that you could then plan for that area, so.
So, I got a question for the Environmental Advisory Board. Now, I believe all this was done by resolution. The Environmental Advisory Board passed a resolution to make these recommendations to the council, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was unanimous, huh, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Council questions for Environmental Advisory Board or the council? Councilman here, representative?
I guess I had just a few thoughts on this, and in no particular order, you know, when you talk about viable site plans, if you really put together a viable site plan, I think that you spend a lot of money on that, and we don't really know. My initial thoughts, when we were talking about putting this into a conservation easement, was to keep it a little bit elastic at the time, so people in the future could do some other things with obviously some restrictions on that. So, I don't know, if you get too specific on site plans, it kind of ties you down. If you want that, I see the need for some, definitely some ideas, but if you want viable, I mean, I'm kind of hinging on that word, viable site plans, it gets, you know, if it's more than sketches on paper and you get professionals in, you start paying for plans that may never come to fruition, I guess. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I would say we would, I would want to see us keep our options open as we're trying to develop this and determine what we want, what we want. I don't, I wouldn't want to come out with a plan that says, okay, these are the only two options, have them hard and fast, where there's no wiggle room, which I think, if you went the conservation easement route, and that's a story or conversation, I think, for another day, but if you went that route, of course, there, you give up certain things and you still have some room within that to, for lots of different options. But I think the main gist was to try to get the ball rolling on this. We've owned the property for a while now, and it seems that most people are in favor of preserving it in some form or fashion as parkland, and we ought to move forward with it.
And I think all of those, you know, if you go park, you need a management plan. If you go conservation easement, that part of it is the management plan, and that was, you know, talked about in pretty great detail, I would say, back over a year ago. Did you want to add anything?
I appreciate the Environmental Advisory Board bringing this up.
I want to add something about the AG opinion. We already know that you can't designate this, and you never did get an AG opinion on that.
No, we didn't, but we do know that Gulf Shores created a conservation easement recently, and I know that the City of Mobile is in the process, and Birmingham has...
So, you're not going to get an AG opinion?
We might. If we do, we'll get an unbiased attorney to write a letter to the AG asking for it.
Totally fine, but, I mean, what we're doing here is not the same as what Gulf Shores did.
When I read the letter from our attorneys to the AG, I thought it was pretty biased against it.
Get an AG opinion and do an unbiased recommendation, but I think before you go, you know, put the cart before the horse, you need to know that first.
All right. Any more, Jimmy? Any more from the Environmental Advisory Committee?
That was it, unless anybody else had a comment.
Okay. All right, Ms. Walkers and Mr. Simmons want to speak to us about another item that came up, I believe, on Thursday or Friday of the past week.
Yes, so, may I remove this to talk, because I feel like it's muffling me? So, we have been, we went out for bid for the Fairhope Area Community Based Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We opened those bids on Thursday at 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. That's got two contracts awarded as part of that. One is GIS and one is planning services. Upon further looking through the proposals that were given to us, we recognized that a large number of those that were submitted were missing very important vital documentation required by the federal government through this grant process. So, just so you know, we had four submitted for the planning part of comprehensive land use, and only one of those was, had everything complete. We had five submitted for GIS, and two of those had everything complete in there. We did go to ADCNR, who's the grantee in this, we are the sub-recipient for this grant, and we did receive an opinion from them that we reject all bids due to the percentage of those submitted who were non-qualified due to Scrivener's errors and go back to the street for this. And it really is, it seems pretty minor, but whenever it comes to federal procurement, we want to make sure that we're doing everything completely correctly. So, what I have for you tonight, and again, I apologize that this is something we're bringing in so late, but this has been developing all day. I do have memos that I was hoping we could discuss walking on tonight, to reject all bids for GIS and for planning and allow us to go back to the streets to give everybody an opportunity to get everything back in. There are other options, of course, but I do think that this may be, especially upon that recommendation from ADCNR, this is the best option for us going forward. I know Hunter may have some, Hunter may want to speak to that, and we can answer any questions that you may have with regard to this.
I think you did a great job. If you have any questions, we can answer those.
So, there were five submitted for the GIS, and for the comp plan, there were four submitted.
That's correct.
And ADCNR is recommending do the Scrivener's errors. We put it out for rebid, and they're going to, like, or you, when we put it back out for bid, they're going to emphatically say, you need to address whatever it is that they weren't addressing.
Yes, absolutely. So, as part of the process, we obviously don't want to go to each, it's completely unethical to go to each person and say, you did this wrong, fix it. So, what we want to do is be able to issue an addendum to that RFP that says, make sure that you have this, 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 and this, because this is not something that is typically done with a contract that we do here or anything that we go out to bid for, because there is the federal procurement. We didn't do this with working waterfront, it wasn't required, but as Restore has kind of, as the process has kind of evolved, this is something they're now requiring of people. We did it with the sewer, and we're probably going to have to do it for everything going forward.
So, let me ask you this. So, you opened the bids on Thursday, right?
Correct.
And our agenda deadline was Wednesday at noon.
Correct.
So, what's the urgency to put it, walk it on? You're asking us to walk it on tonight to reject the bids and put it back out for rebid. What's the urgency to put it on tonight's agenda as opposed to just waiting for the next council meeting and rejecting them at that time?
So, it's a great question. We have to have this out for bid for three weeks as a result of what is spelled out by that RFP. We're already, you know, up against a clock. Obviously, we can always ask for extensions from ADCNR, but you don't necessarily want to be doing that. We want to be able to stay as close to our original timeline as possible while also giving everybody a fair shot to really get their stuff in.
We're eating into the time of the overall project in the longer way.
Summarization.
Where we're, you know, an extra two weeks just takes two more weeks after that.
I guess me, it's just me, because I sit in this seat, I get a heartache just trying to walk things on. It seems to be rather routine now as opposed to, you know, the exception. It seems to be that we do that quite a bit when we miss the deadline by a couple of days, and I, you know, I guess that, I don't know that it gives council time to review the information and fully digest it, so I guess I just want to turn it over to council and ask what they're thinking on that. I guess, given the sensitivity of the timeline, I don't have a problem walking it on.
Now, this is for the RFQ, there's no money numbers here.
This is the RFP.
I mean, RFP, there's no money.
There's no, yeah, absolutely. So, we didn't, you know, violate anything by opening the bids. There's no money to be looking at here.
Everybody knows what pot of money is available.
Yeah, so what you're getting at is nobody knows what somebody else's bid is, which is what you have a heartache with, is if somebody sees somebody's bid and they know what they, competitively, they lost their competitive advantage, so, yeah, that's not the case, I don't think.
There's almost more of this particular bid process because of how it has evolved. The Restore Act is basically asking for some additional information on the front end that you could normally iron out after the bid is awarded.
Yeah, absolutely. Before we sign a contract, whenever you make the recommendation of who to award the contract for, or contract to, previously, what has happened is that we, you know, satisfy these requirements in between that award and contract signing.
Gotcha.
This is on the front end now.
So, the curveball is that they're wanting it up front and not something you can determine later.
That's right. Usually, it's the, who you're awarding the contract to, now every applicant has to supply that.
So, can you write a resolution between now and 6:00 and have us something?
We can.
Yes, I have memos.
You want to reject all bids and then put it out for rebid?
Immediately.
Immediately.
Right.
Now, because, I'm assuming, understanding that the reason we're doing this is they didn't fill out the paperwork correctly in order to qualify for the government.
That's correct.
What's the guarantee that that's not going to happen this time?
So, what we plan to do is issue an addenda that says, please make sure that you have followed, that you have made sure that you have included what is required on this RFP. Make sure that you've ticked off all the boxes. We do believe, I spoke with ADCNR earlier today, I don't know that it's on this email, but I do believe that they are going to allow us to issue something to everyone that we're rejecting to say that these are the things that we're missing without specifying that you missed this one requirement, you missed this one.
It just seems like it's a large enough award that you hate to just have one person. We ought to have some options.
Is this the contract where we have people that didn't turn in their stuff on time?
Yes.
We had at least two of them that didn't timely present their bids, so we have to reject them without even looking at them.
Yeah, they went straight back, so.
That turned out to be a delivery issue. They had guarantees.
Well, we've been through this before, and you might say, well, just because it's your problem if you didn't get your bid in on time.
But are those companies excluded from the rebid?
No one is excluded from the rebid, because we have to push it back out onto the street for everyone.
And of those list of people that had inconsistencies, the people we rejected were not included in that list. So, the numbers you heard were not including the ones that didn't make the deadline.
Mr. City Attorney, do you see any legal problems with that?
You've only got one effective bid, one valid.
On one and two on the other, though.
I'm sorry, what else?
There's two different bids. You've got one...
One on planning and two on GIS.
One viable for planning, yes.
One viable bid on one and two on the other.
Right. So, it went out as two separate bids?
It did.
The one you can reject outright, and I think the other one, where you can negotiate with party that did, I mean, a bid of one, but you have that option of rejecting. How many we got, any?
But ADCNR is saying that recommending rejecting them all, I just, but I don't know what legal authority, you know, they're...
I know the one.
Are they going to back us up, some zappers?
Yeah, and, you know, I told you I'd bring the RFP, and I did not bring it with me, and that's my mistake, but in our RFP, there is a clause that says the city reserves the right to waive irregularities and things that will, you know, keep us from having any kind of legal issue with rejecting all bids outright.
Are they Scrivener's errors then? I mean, that seems like an irregularity versus is it something they did not include in the package?
It was not included.
I think something like that, Scrivener's error, but I don't know. The one, I'm sure we can reject. The other one, I'm not clear on, and I would have to look at the, look at the law, the bid law on that one, I just don't know.
Was that something we should reject the one and then hold the other one over until the next council to determine, for you to determine whether or not...
If the federal government is requiring these items to be in the bid package, then we can't accept them.
We're not asking them to be accepted. The question is whether or not to put it out for rebid. We had two responsible bidders in one of them, and one and the other.
We had two that completed it correctly for GIS and one that completed it correctly for the planning portion.
Let's hold it, look at this.
That's why walking it on, to me, I'm uncomfortable with without kind of exploring it a little bit.
What did she say?
Is it required to do the document?
Yes. I mean, it is listed in the RFP as a requirement.
I would recommend just holding off for two weeks, whilst making sure that one bid or two, we need to put that back out. Do whatever you want on the first one, but you need to...
We can reject the one, we can reject the one with the one bid.
Yeah, I mean, I already know I don't want to have to go with just one bid to choose from and not have options on something that's that big, so it seems like we could do that and then wait on the other, or we could just wait on them and do it all.
Does it make a difference if they have a separate timeline?
Because the project is one overall project, I would think we would want those to be the same time.
Parallel.
But that's just gut reaction, I mean, you know, the GIS and the comp plan are going to be, you know, they're kind of, those teams, they're partners throughout this project, so to have one three weeks, you know, a contract that differs three weeks might cause some problems at the end of this project.
Gotcha. Now, let's just hold over two weeks and...
Let's figure out about that.
Figure it out.
Robert, hold over, hold off.
I think the schedule would be out of line. You don't want to give me trouble.
Yeah.
I think we can make it out.
What?
I don't want to give you trouble.
Two bidders.
Well, I'm here, we're not going to put it on the agenda, so the question was to walk it on, so we'll consider that the next council meeting.
Okay.
And that would just get us all as much information as we can get. I'd probably talk to the city attorney on that, too. I'm a little nervous about that, especially with the two.
Yeah.
Not so much the one at all, so.
Thank you.
All right. All right, committee updates? Councilman Conyers?
I'm covered.
Day one.
Covered. Covered Environmental Advisory Board, and I don't have any other updates at this time.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, so the Fairhope Public School Commission met last week. Couple of notes out of that, we'll have some nominations to serve on that commission in December. If you're interested in serving on the school commission, get your application in. Also, on the city website, you can go on there and see where the Fairhope Public School Commission allocated the three mil money that was received through the referendum. And they are also asking to be put on the work session agenda for sometime in December so they can kind of give an update at a public meeting. The Ped Bike Committee looking for new members. If you're interested in serving on the Ped Bike Committee, please get your application in. And Richard Johnson was there, we talked about maybe redesigning some parking spots downtown where some handicap ramps intruded on the sidewalk space to make some shorter parking spots, maybe include some bike racks at those locations as well. And also looking, there's a section, I don't know how it became so, but the section of sidewalk that is from Mobile Street from Fells to Pier Street, there's a ordinance on the Fairhope books that say you cannot ride your bike, you have to walk it in between Fells and Pier Street.
I think Kevin passed that one right there.
So, looking to get that eliminated and maybe even widening the sidewalk, that sidewalk kind of gets choked down in that area, there's a kind of a wide bike lane, if you will, next to the sidewalk, but it's got the hard curbs, it's not kind of one in the same, so Richard's looking at maybe some grant opportunities to correct that stretch of sidewalk, because it does, it's a pretty high-traffic area, so, anyway, just be looking for something coming on that soon. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
Actually, I have no committee reports.
Okay. I have no committee reports tonight.
I'm going to slide them in.
Any committee reports?
No, thank you, but thank you for asking.
Okay.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thanks for looking out.
Go to department head updates, and I'll start it on the left side. Ms. Creach? Okay. Mr. Cortinez?
Mayor, Council, we, everyone knows we've got a storm coming. We want everybody to be safe. One thing that is very important to the city and for everything when it comes to a disaster is that we have, we're able to go in and do evaluations on the damage because that becomes the amount of damage that we have goes into a dollar amount, which then releases federal funds. So once the wind dies down, we're going to have our inspectors out just driving areas and looking. But if anybody has anything that happens, we would please ask them to contact us either by email or by phone so that we're aware of it. Sometimes we've got houses backed by themselves in an area we may not normally go and we may not see it. So you go to our website and there's links there, or they can email us at buildingpermits@fairhopeal.gov. Or our phone number is 990-0153. And that's very important for this when you get into these federal disasters. So we would ask that our citizens, please let us know what they have going on so we can come out and take a look at it and help them any way we can.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Holliday? Okay. Mr. Simmons?
Just a quick reminder, and there, I think there was some discussion on social media about some of our projects during the Planning Commission, and everybody's due their opinion. And some of those will be coming to council. Did want to make one thing clear because something worried me that I think was an overwhelming assumption that we don't get information out to the public until a couple of days before those meetings. This is one of the most transparent places I've ever seen as far as planning cases go. And just wanted to mention a reminder to the public that three weeks to a month before, there's a video of everything that's going to come up to the agenda as they go through what we call a DRC meeting. They speak with both utilities, Public Works, Building, Planning Department. All of those are on a call and are on a video. Right now, we're virtual, but they're recorded, they're on YouTube, just like our Planning Commission, this meeting, everything else. So just wanted to throw that reminder out there so the public is aware.
Yeah, I want to make the public aware that the Planning Commission is not made up of elected officials, as one comment stated as well. There's only one elected official on there, and that's a council member that's on there through a rotation, and the rest are appointed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison?
So picked a good day to come back from vacation. Just two things real quick, just to let the public know. If you see downed power lines or anything like that, please stay safe, stay away from them, and let us know about them. The 928-8003 number will work.
Say that again, nine?
928-8003. You know, that, after hours, that routes through the police dispatch for now. And so we are going to be monitoring the situation going forward. We've pre-staged a bunch of equipment ready to go for wastewater and our electric crews, as well as gas and water. Second thing, real quick, is I wanted to introduce Jason Langley. He is, stand up, Jason, the new Water and Wastewater Superintendent. Comes to us with 20-plus years in management of water and wastewater systems, helping utilities through consent decrees, through receiverships, things like that. He was most recently the Public Works Director in a city up in Georgia. So, but he's from Alabama, wanted to come back home, and I managed to snag him, get him back here.
What city? Where were you?
The city.
In Georgia?
Yeah.
Social circle.
Okay. Georgia.
Just north of Atlanta.
Gotcha.
So, but he's from North Alabama.
All right.
So that's all I have.
Oh, I had a question for you, and for both of y'all, actually. Did we do any prep, just based on the amount of rainfall we may get? Did we do anything where we ride around and clear storm drains and...
The storm drains are Richards', and they did go through and do that as well. What we've done on the wastewater side is we've taken extra pumps into the areas we know we may have issues at and set those pumps there or generators there. We have two more pumps that we got today in kind of a standby mode that we can take and move wherever we need to. We have generators set up in places that we know we have issues, and we also have another generator that's currently at a water plant, but we have plans in place to move it to one of the lift stations if we need to. So, and then both of our VAC trucks, we've made sure we're full of diesel and the tanks were empty so that we can start vacuuming if we need to.
So when it's safe to get out, people will be able to check and make sure any of those SSOs are being addressed?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, there are some limitations on when we can be on the roads in that big equipment, but...
Absolutely. Safety first.
After that, we'll be out there as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sharice?
We have the final adoption for the part-time employees going from working 19 hours to 29 hours tonight. I just wanted to see if you guys had any more final questions about that? Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Are you, who's going to, while you're up there, are you going to speak to item 10, the RX carve-out? Are you going to speak to that, Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll wait. I'll come back around during the agenda meeting and get to that then.
Okay.
Just while you were there, I thought I'd ask.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Pat?
Just to inform you, the tennis center and Quail Creek both closed down this afternoon so we could shore up everything. The rec center and the pool are closing at 6:00 this evening. So we will be closed Tuesday, probably Wednesday. We'll see how this storm plays out. All the ballparks will be closed for all activity, practices, games going forward until we determine what's going to take place. So we did put all that on social media earlier just to inform everyone, so just letting you know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Jill? Jessica? Jason? Sure? Lynn? Richard?
Just a couple of kind of key updates on our preparation for Hurricane Sally. Today was our preventative measure day. We do keep a list of what we call hotspots, and so we got out there and checked all those drains, made sure the sweet scoopers got out, as well as we work with the utilities to look at drains and proximities of lift stations. So keeping those clean is always very beneficial to that. And, you know, again, our biggest concern on the Public Works side of the House is that there is a potential for a lot of rainfall over a pretty prolonged period of time. And, you know, of course, our concern is when conditions get saturated and then you get one of those bands that drop three or four inches in a very short period of time, that's usually where the flash flooding problems go. We've pre-staged barricades and things of that nature on roads that may historically overtop that we don't want folks attempting to drive through and when it is covered in water, and just keeping an eye on all that. You know, housekeeping items, if you've noticed, the hanging baskets are down, the trash receptacles in the parks are collected up, the handicap mat has been pulled up and pulled off the beach. We did go ahead and barricade off the wooden piers, as well as the, at sunset today, the municipal pier was barricaded off as well, just trying to keep folks out there and off of those during bad weather conditions. Key thing is Tuesday sanitation is not running at this point in time, meaning that, as you know, we pick up garbage starting at 1:00 a.m. So a lot of people think tonight's Monday, but actually, it's Tuesday when we start at 1:00 a.m. on Tuesday morning. And right now, since this storm is kind of slow to get here, slow to impact us, we're not announcing anything on Wednesday sanitation services. We will get that announcement decision made at probably midday tomorrow. Good news is Wednesday is not a heavy residential day. We collect residential on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. But we will at least have a skeleton crew if we need to go check backdoor services and things of that nature. And we are at least at sunup in the morning, if weather conditions allow, to at least run the routes because we know some customers are going to put a can out, and we would rather get it collected now than to be picking it up off the streets blown over full. So it's better to have a can blown over empty than that. And we do have essential employees on call to respond as required as this develops. Again, our key concerns is there's the potential for flooding, especially impassable roadways. Just remind our citizens that if you can't see the asphalt, don't assume it's still there. So, you know, we're going to try to be ahead of them, working with police and utilities and going there. And again, we will be out there if we do get storm drains that are clogged, that we can get unclogged and get that road drained, we'll do that. Kind of keying on sanitation, I did share with a memo that I had made a recommendation to mayor, and I didn't want to cover it with y'all, just so you were aware of it. We are recommending, at least in the short-term duration, is that we conclude drop-off for recycle and landfill at 555 South Section Street at noon on Saturdays. And that's right now for two key reasons. If you've ever dropped anything off, you've probably met Ms. Mina. Unfortunately, Ms. Mina was a retiree that worked full-time for us, was a gate attendant. Unfortunately, and keep her in your thoughts and prayers, she has encountered a very unexpected health issue and it's not good. And so we have an employee challenge right now, and the other part, there was another position there for part-time that we've been having, struggled to fill as well. And the other thing, the county closes their drop-off at noon on Saturday, and we tend to have a mad rush on Saturday afternoons. And we have, in the last couple of weeks, ended up with some items kind of tucked away in the metal recycle bin that shouldn't have been there, and we got a rejected load and ended up in a little bit of an environmental compliance issue. So we've got to have a little better ability to monitor what's coming in and what's being deposited in our various areas. With considering, the council's going to consider giving some flexibility to part-time employees, we may be recommending to you in the next year's budget that those two positions for gate attendants become part-time exclusively. That would be an overall cost savings because we need 45 hours to cover a Monday through Saturday week with the closing at noon on Saturday. And that would definitely be accomplished working with two part-time folks at, you know, some average of 22 and a half hours per each, and that would work out well. And on one of those exciting news that may not mean much to you, but means the world to me, on Friday...
No, no.
Concerning our Arts Alley Transit Hub project that has, we've talked about for forever, we got a nice letter and confirmation from the federal government that our NEPA process is 100% complete. They have accepted our cultural resources assessment, our historical assessment, and as long as we have an archaeologist present, whenever we dig on that site, we can move forward with the project. So next meeting, you will see an approval for a archaeologist that is Secretary of the Interior approved, and hopefully, we'll be giving you a timeline when those plans will be going out to be bid upon and everything else. So that has been nine months since December when they asked for a whole bunch of dention.
How long will the, how much does the archaeologist have to be on site during that process?
They want the archaeologist present anytime we dig. So basically, as you may or may not recall, the parking deck actually has downspouts that just dump out onto the alley. So we're going to pick up all that water in a pipe system that goes in and ties into the Church Street system, and they will have to be present when the asphalt is pulled up for the new paver system. So hopefully, it won't be terribly expensive, but do remember, the good news is they are at least going to pay for 80% of the archaeologists being there, so we're going to have a 20% cost associated with that, so...
But it also eats into our budget, doesn't it?
Well, theoretically, we should be able to go back through the NPO process and get an adjustment if necessary to include that additional cost requirement.
There's no guarantee the NPO is going to give any more money for that project.
There is no guarantee, but it's a good story to at least tell, so... But we're just excited to have positive movement.
So at the end, basically, we had one group raise a question about whether it was an archaeology site, and then they mandate that we have to have an archaeologist on site when we dig. That's ridiculous.
Yes. One Indian nation based in Oklahoma responded to the letters that we were required to send out for tribal interest and said, yes, we have an interest and we're requesting that there be an archaeologist present, so...
Something smells there.
Can't make it up, Mr. Chairman, so... But that's all, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Lisa?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. That's it for the work session. We'll go into the agenda meeting. You'll bear with me. Item five, the final adoption for the personnel rules, policies, and procedures ordinance. Sharice already asked if you have any more questions for that, about that. So I'm assuming if you have any at that time, Sharice will be the one. Let me back up, let me back up a minute. I'm going to, at the beginning of the meeting, ask council to walk on an agenda item which would be declaring the state of emergency for the city. And I wanted to ask the attorney, city attorney, a question. There's an effective date. It says effective Monday, September 14th. Do we have to put a time on that? I mean, since it is the 14th? And then the next question would be, do we have to put an expiration on that? Or do you just leave it open?
I think it's open up, the 14th. I would put a time on there, and you can put a time as of the time.
You can say immediately? Effective immediately?
Effective immediately is fine, or as of the time the governor declared emergency, stated out.
Can we do that? Can we go back to that time and have a, declare a state of emergency, go back? That was effective, I think, 3:00 today, right? 3:00 p.m. maybe?
Some, close to that time, yes.
Yeah.
I would just say effective immediately, because you're declaring for the city.
We haven't expended any money today.
Or, because if that, if that player affects, player, like, employees that might affect the training, I don't know.
6:00.
Effective 5:00 p.m. Would that make sense? Effective 5:00 p.m. But now, before I say that, does it affect any Public Works employees that may have been on overtime after, sometime prior to 5:00 p.m.?
We have not seen you overtime. Everything today has been regular time, and I'll have to go back and check. We have reimbursement for preventative measures, but until there's a national declaration, that's what begins that reimbursement block. So 5:00 is appropriate for these purposes.
Okay. Okay. We'll make it effective 5:00 p.m. We'll make a few notes. So now I'll move forward to item six, which is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's not to exceed 11,935,000 principal amount of the URW series 2020, dated September 30th, 2020. Kim, I believe we would talk to you about that. You want to go ahead and brief us on that? And while you're walking up, do you want us to just introduce that and let it lay over until the next meeting? Or would you rather us suspend with the rules and vote on that tonight?
I believe, because it's financing you, Lisa, help me with this one, they would need to go ahead and vote on this.
I think the attorney asked us to vote on it, the one that's helping us.
The bond attorney.
The bond attorney, yes.
Okay. Well, when you hear the good news, I think you'll probably be okay with suspending with the rules.
So just to give you, you know, I put this out for a bid, and I was very surprised, but I had 10 banks bid on this, and the winning bank is here, the VVA. We had rates as low, to be able to have a 10-year, we have the option to pay off after year 2025, but 1.28%, so we went from a 3.15% to a 1.28%. So on a, almost a $12 million debt that we had left off payoff. So this was big numbers for the city of Fairhope. I was very surprised at these rates. I didn't think they were going to come in this low. But do y'all have any questions on this? And just to give you also, we're going to close September 30th because if we roll into October, we have to get an opinion from our auditors. So since we have a financials, audit of financials, this is the reason we're really rushing into it, and it does save us a little bit on interest, the sooner we can pay the, you know, refinance this. So y'all have any questions for that?
Will you let the council know what that total savings is? And that would, that's if we pay it off in the 10...
And just to give you also, we're going to close September 30th because if we roll into October, we have to get an opinion from our auditors. So, since we have a financials, audit of financials, this is the reason we're really rushing into it. And it does save us a little bit on interest, the sooner we can pay the, you know, refinance this. So, y'all have any questions for that?
Will you let the council know what that total savings is? And that would, that's if we pay it off in the 10 years that's scheduled. It could be more savings if we paid it off after the five years. So, what was it, around $675,000, $700,000?
Yes. So, the net present value of the savings is $841,000.
Eight forty-one.
So, that was-
It's not bad.
It's not bad. It was a good day, so I was really surprised. Do you have any questions for the winning bank?
I don't know. I know that guy. He's-
A little shady.
He's a little shady, but you got to watch out for bankers in general, right?
The best get the best.
We appreciate you, Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Thanks for BBVA for such a great bid. Kim, you want to jump into number seven there?
I do.
This would be complying with the requirements of section 8.2B of the trust indenture between the City of Fairhope and Regions Bank dated November 1, 1996. I'm sure you're all aware of all that, but I'm going to have her repeat it for you just in case.
So, I did bring the little book that is in my office. And so, this will be the ninth indenture. So, when the city puts up their revenues, the utility revenues as collateral, this is a process. The city's been doing this kind of financing, my understanding, since, I think, 1989. Y'all have used the same bond counsel, Adams, excuse me, Allen Ziegler has been the city's bond counsel for years. And I think he's moved into a semi-retirement and I'm dealing with Kane, who's been in his office, also helping him with these. And so, I had Kane's card right here, so I just want to let you know I've used the same company. And so, anyway, this is the process that the city has used for years instead of doing a GO, they're using revenues. And so, you have to have these indentures and follow the same rules that was set in place and for this one, for 1996. So, that's the process that we have to do another, a resolution to add this. So, do you have any questions with, for that resolution?
It's just compliance resolution. Okay.
Do we need to suspend with the rules with that as well?
That's just a motion, a second.
That's a regular resolution.
Thank you.
And Kim, do you want to go down to item number?
10.
10?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, you see item 10? Recommendations from Cobb's Allen, Stop Loss Carrier, an RX carve-out?
So, we hired Cobb's Allen to be our broker for our health insurance stop-loss benefits. And so, we had them bring us back some ideas. We're having some additional costs in our prescription drug program. And so, they brought some ideas to us and met with President Burrell and Councilman Conyer. And so, they brought some ideas to us. And so, the idea is that we're going to carve out our prescription program, leaving Blue Cross Prime and to Med One. And at the same time, we're going to eliminate our specialty drugs. Specialty drugs is the problem, you know, all across America is the specialty drugs. You know, anytime you're seeing a commercial on TV, those are very expensive drugs and they are the specialty drugs. So, with us carving out and going to Med One, we also would be partnered with a company that is RT's Help. So, the RT's Help will then assist our employees that are on that prescription drugs. And right now, we have eight members-
On that, let me see, and on that specialty drug, right?
Yes. So, but we have a total of eight members that are on specialty drugs. And so, the RT's Help will partner, is partnered with the prescription drug company. They will assist our employees on getting manufactured coupons. So, when they get the manufactured coupons, this takes it off of the city and the manufacturers are really the ones that's going to be paying for those drugs. Depending on how much the employee makes, it will also put them into special needs programs. They may pay zero for the prescription, they may pay five. Right now, they pay $100 per prescription. And so, you know, this, I think, is a win-win for our employees that are on these drugs that, you know, they may pay $5, they may pay zero. But they will actually be walking them through, helping them with the paperwork and getting these prescription drugs. So, and then, what we will save on doing this is about $700,000 on our plan by switching the prescription drugs and to be able to take the specialty drugs off of our plan. And then, in turn, that we're actually going to be saving on our stop-loss because removing that liability from the health insurance plan, that reduces our stop-loss also.
Yeah. So, the second part of that resolution is to select the stop-loss carrier, which has, what is that right off? I know you know it right off the top of your head, Kim. What's that savings?
That, that savings was a 42% savings.
Was that what?
42% savings.
But what's that number? Like 400, 500,000?
Yeah. Our premium's going to be 467,119.
And it was going to be-
It was going-
It was going to be about 800 and, if I'm reading this right, about 856,000.
Well, what they were going to increase it to was 1,164.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. The 1.2.
Yeah. If we would have stayed with Symmetra, Symmetra's renewal was coming in at 1,164. That was at the same as where we were. We did increase our stop-loss to 100,000 and their rate still came in at 984.
So, between the two changes, it's a total savings of about 1.1 or 1.2, wasn't it?
Yeah.
About 1.1 or 1.2 million. And also, I want to point out that city clerk and also Sharice were in the meeting as well. Have any questions for Kim on that? Was that it for you today?
That was, that was it.
I think that's all I had for you. Thank you. Okay. Item eight is a resolution authorizing me to negotiate a municipal lease agreement between the City of Fairhope and Christopher G. Campbell and Bonnie Campbell for use of the premises solely and exclusively for access to a 40-foot golf maintenance easement. Lynn, do you want to discuss that? And Pat, if you have, want to add anything?
This is property that is a right-of-way that runs along the 13th and 14th fairways out of Quail Creek. We have been maintaining that property for some time. And then, all of a sudden, we got word that the owner of the property that includes the right-of-way was going to erect a fence along his property, which was virtually three feet from our cart path. It would change the integrity of the holes, the way they play the holes, it would tighten them up considerably. So, we started discussing leasing the property following the program we already have down at the marina with Mike Francis. And the owner wanted $1,500 a month for the property, which we said, thank you, but no thank you, you can put up your fence. He came back. I have a feeling he discovered he was going to have to maintain the right-of-way, which we've been doing for years. So, he came back and he agreed to 1,500 a year. And we would maintain the right-of-way. He will erect a fence, but it will be on the other side of the right-of-way and it will be a much more attractive fence than what he was going to put up next to the fairway.
When I hit my ball out of bounds, will they be able to climb over it and get my ball?
No, you will not. You will be out of bounds.
Well, I didn't say play it, I just want to retrieve it.
But we've given you all that extra area. If we had not done this, you would not, you would have to climb the fence to find it. It is, along both fairways, it is unfortunately, prime landing area for a lot of us. So, it does affect the play of the two holes.
Counsel President, one thing they wanted to add in that contract was the fence that Lynn mentioned on that south boundary, which is alongside of the boundary. They wanted to put, they are going to put a fence up along that whole thing. They want to include that in the contract. So, that's one minor change that we wanted to bring to the council.
That is in the, what we're adopting though, tonight includes that?
You, we're just adopting the resolution authorizing you to negotiate, but the only change that we've discussed in the proposed contract that's attached is the fence issue. And I just want to bring that to your attention. It shouldn't be a problem because they're going to put it, I think, right there where the out-of-bounds mark is-
Right.
Basically, where the high grass starts.
Yes, yes.
Do y'all understand what that is? On 13 and 14, there's a mowed area that we've been maintaining, that's the right-of-way, but we don't own it. And then, there's, the grass gets really high, 40 feet to the right of the path, let's say. And we've been using it as a golf course for-
Ever.
Thirty years, maybe?
Yeah. As long as the course has been there.
As long as the course has been there.
And there's no issue with the fence going up where he wants to play, so it is on our current, I think it's a lateral hazard. It'll just make it out of bounds if you go over the fence.
And you might get lucky and bounce one off of there.
You might. You never know. Back into the fairway.
Okay. Any questions for Lynn? Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Jessica, do you have the next one? Award the RFP for Program Administrative Services contract?
This is me. So, I don't know if you can tell, but we are heavy into all the restore work right now. And this is the program administration contract as part of that comprehensive land use plan. You'll see that that recommendation is to award that contract to Grant Management LLC with a total not-to-exceed of $26,000 over the course of this grant.
So, this was somewhat related, though, to the other issue that we want to walk on, but not the same, but not the same award, right?
It's not the same at all. Right, right. This is definitely separate.
Just the grant. This is just managing the money.
Absolutely. And I will say that it is very beneficial, especially since we seem to have some hiccups with the planning and the GIS part. It is very beneficial to us as a city to go ahead and get Grant Administration on board and get a contract executed so that as we work through this, we make sure that we're ticking off all of those boxes that are required by the federal level.
Any questions for Jessica?
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Item 11, I'm going to talk about these a little bit. I'm going to ask who's going to speak to this. Richard, do you speak to item 11?
Yes, sir.
The bids for the HVAC parts and supplies, the masonry and concrete work, and then the tree removal services. Let me let you talk about it first and I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah. And I've kind of hit 11 and 13 since they have a similar issue. As you know, we have capabilities in-house to do a lot of improving, repairing, updating HVA systems. In the market to buy supplies, i.e. new units, things of that nature, compressors, heat exchangers or whatever, we've had kind of a consolidation of the market, meaning there's like, there's one vendor that is exclusive to purchase from, from certain brands and things of that nature. And what we run into is bid law says that when you exceed a certain amount in a given fiscal year of a like-kind product, you run into a bid law problem. So, we attempted to go out to bid to have suppliers basically competitively bid, selling us their products with a fixed markup not-to-exceed so that we would not run into that problem. We got no responses back. And the same thing with tree services. We, at times, have trees that are too big for public works to deal with and we have to go out and bid those trees to be removed. And again, we ran into that same problem. It's a like-kind service and we got no responses. The good news of getting no responses, that allowed us to sit down with these vendors and negotiate and bring back to you. So, that's what we're asking in 11 and 13. Right now, for example, for a particular brand of air conditioner, we can't buy anymore this year because we have run into the bid law requirements, meaning that if it is brand X and there is a dealer here that can only sell that brand, and that is the case, we have exceeded or bumped up to that 15,000 cumulative amount from that one dealer in the calendar year. And that's a tough thing. If you're trying to fix a Reem air conditioner, you can't go buy a carrier part to do that. You have to go back to that vendor that is the certified vendor for Reem or whatever that is. So, hopefully, that'll be the resolution. On item number 12, as you know, we have been attempting to do ADA improvements at our municipal stadium and it has become a little bit of an albatross. And Pat has the patience of a saint. But we did open a bid. It was, we have a singular bidder who's a very reputable and good contractor, but we felt that, and even the contractor felt, that there was value to be derived from negotiating and cleaning this project up. And he had some very strong ideas, but we can't have that negotiation until you authorize us to reject the bid, authorize us to go and value engineer, working with that one responsive contractor and coming back to you. And that's what we're asking there. And the good news is, time is on our side. When we went out, we had a coin flip of whether it'd be a high school football season. The good news is, we're having a high school football season, so we know we can't do anything until that season's over, so we have some time to get this right and hopefully get it within budget and come back to you. And that's what we're asking on item number 12. And I'll be glad to address any questions.
So, Richard, my question is pretty simple. I just am very concerned with the fact that we're getting no bids and we're getting one bid. I know you touched on it on 11 and 13, but you know, on the HVAC parts, you know, you can only go to one distributor because we've got one brand. I mean, is there any way to, is there any way to improve our competitive advantage? I mean, we, you know, you bid things out to hopefully get a lower price, but it, you know, if we can only receive one bid and then we have to go negotiate with them, it just, and we've seen this a lot. I guess, this is, these are, these are three items on tonight's agenda, but we've been seeing this a lot lately. And maybe it's just a sign of how busy contractors are, they just, they don't have the manpower, they don't need the work. I don't know. But it seems like, it seems like an issue to me.
Yeah. And I, the air conditioning kind of surprised me because you thought that that was a pretty easy bid to fill up, fill out. It's meaning, we were just asking you to tell us what would be your markup, meaning that everything you buy from us under these categorical items would be cost plus 10% or whatever, and we got no responses. That one kind of fummoxed me. I think that, as you know, the tree companies out there, they're very good, they're very good companies out there, but this was a little bit odd to them and I don't think they knew how to respond to it. You know, what we, what we were trying to do is to be able to do a competition and what we did is, we picked three public trees as examples and asked them to price what they would charge us if those three trees, in different location, the different sizes, were to have to be dropped and ready to, you know, to be removed. And we thought we made it simple, but maybe we got too cute with that. I don't know, so.
So, our new, didn't we create a little task force to go around and trim the trees and they can't remove large trees? Is that what I'm hearing?
And absolutely. They're up and running and this may be ultimately, in a year, a moot issue, but right now, they definitely have a lot on their plate as far as utility lines, which is their primary purpose. And again, when, you know, when public works, we have folks capable of doing tree work, but we have limitations, whether it be the size of our bucket truck or just when it's, and frankly, sometimes when it's a public tree that has exposure to private property, to have a company that comes licensed and bonded, that takes, that is a better deal for us. And generally, what we do is, they drop it, we haul it, grind it stump and do all the parts to make it as more economical as possible. But again, in the year leading up to establishing an in-house tree crew through the electrical department, we had to depend on a third party to do it and we ran up against the maximum that we could spend in a given year, the $15,000, so.
Richard, do you think if you take number 12 and you do sit down with the one valid bidder, do you think that you'll come up with a good price?
I think so, within budget, yes, sir.
Are you, if you don't come up with a good price? Well, you say within budget, but I mean, a reasonable price? Are you willing to say, we'll put it back out for bid and see what we can get if you can't get a reasonable price?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would ask you to do that.
All right.
Did you want to add to that, Mr. Allison? Are you on the bidding?
I was just going to, to kind of tag on with what Richard was talking about with the tree crew. The new, the new tree crew is doing amazing, getting caught up on all the electric things. But we do have a lot of requests are coming in from other departments and we're helping those out. And by having this contractor on board, it just kind of picks up that excess that we have right now. So, and sometimes with the equipment we have, until we get our new, our loader- So, and sometimes with the equipment we have until we get our new, our loader truck and things like that, sometimes there are trees that are a little bit big for our crew to take down.
Counsel, do you have any questions about those three items? You know, what's the city done in the past with the large trees, Richard?
As, as you know, in the past, we used to have a contract with a third-party tree company. Uh, the last one that we, we employed was Burford's. And luckily, uh, the electrical department was very, very generous to us that they would allow us to dispatch Burford's or whoever was filling that role to take out a problematic tree, it was too large for us. And then basically, they, they would kind of quote it before they did it, so we knew what was, had to become out of our, our tree budget within public works to handle it. Unfortunately, we, we, we let that contract go because there was a performance issue there. And so we have not, so we've had to go out on, on a case-by-case basis in the private market. So that's what we did before.
Maybe just bid it on the hourly, you know, get an hourly rate from, you know, the tree service, you know, for a large tree, just tell them.
And that's kind of what we asked for was, you know, what, what was the standard crew rate and, and if it was this tree, so we could at least show that everybody bid, would bid on three example trees, so we'd have a good apples-to-apples comparison of, of value there. So, but I think we, we were too, too smart in our bid requirements to, and, and outsmarted ourselves, I'm afraid. Maybe thought about it too much.
That's strange. Tree wasn't too big, was it?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Item fourteen is authorizing the mayor to execute a change order to bid number eighteen dash nineteen, change order number one to bid number eighteen dash nineteen, the Bayou Drive, Fairwood Drive and Fairhope Avenue wastewater collection and transmission improvements. Uh, this would be a deduction, if I read this correctly, in ninety-two thousand, two-hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Michael, if we have any questions? I'm assuming we're probably not going to ask a lot of questions about a ninety-two thousand dollar deduction unless somebody wants to say, why wasn't it more? Any questions about that, counsel? Okay, all right, thank you, Michael. Item fifteen is a resolution, City of Fairhope vote to procure work boots for the public works department. Richard, is it you or Kim or?
I think any of us can talk about it, yes.
Okay, uh, you want to talk about it then, Richard?
As you know, that within our, our P P E for both, uh, utilities, public works and some other key departments that have to have safety shoes, this is just the renewal of, of that program. And we do have Centos, which has the boot truck program, uh, under, uh, the, uh, purchasing group there. And it's just the, the annual renewal on that, so.
And what is that? There is an employee contribution, right? Uh, we, we pay up to a certain amount, is that right?
That's correct. On, uh, on a, up to an annual basis, the employee gets a credit for boots. He can go in the boot truck and if he picks boots that are beyond what his annual credit is, then he pays the difference. And the beauty about that is Centos just handles that. They can swipe his debit card, take his cash, his check or whatever, uh, for any amount above what will be covered. But they do carry qualifying safety boots that, that, that he can, that, that employee can get without any money out of pocket, but a lot of them.
And that's annual, we give this annually to everyone?
No, so, no, well, they have to, we have, we have, I have a boot inspector.
Okay, we do, in fact, I mean, because, you know, I, I get, I have the same program through my company, but I don't go through a pair of safety boots every year.
That is correct. For example, our hoppers who are on the back trucks, the, uh, a year's about all they can get out of the boots, but, but the person driving the truck, yeah, they, they can get up two, three years out of a pair of boots. So it, but, but no, no more frequently than once a year. That's, but they have to demonstrate that the boot has to be replaced before we authorize them to go to the boot truck.
Will you tell us what our contribution, isn't a hundred dollars?
A hundred and thirty.
A one-thirty. I think that's reasonable, too. Any questions for Richard on that? Okay. Who's going to speak to the, approve the unbudgeted procurement of the U V sanitizing lights? Is that you, Michael? Do we have anybody to speak about the U V sanitizing lights?
I know a little bit about this.
I know what they are.
Yeah, this was something I know procurement and talked with, with building maintenance and our custodial staff, and this would be covered by the CARES Act, but these are, um, a system in which buildings can be sanitized by using these light systems, meaning the, uh, custodians get at, when, after, after hours set them up. I think it takes like thirty minutes, it cleans the, the area prescribed and then they can move it and do that. And it was a recommendation from, uh, purchasing as well as building maintenance that we, uh, we, we buy a set of them and put them to work. And that would be a hundred percent refunded and you've already pre-approved that through the CARES Act, so.
Is the labor refundable on that? If we, they have to spend more time going through U V disinfecting property through the CARES Act? Or do they have time to do that?
Well, we, I mean, we could code anything that's going to be related to the disinfecting, any extra labor that we do, yes. As long as we code that and I can be able, we can be able to submit as reimbursement.
Questions, counsel?
And as a second tier, also remember that there's, their preventative measures are covered by the FEMA P A, but that's only a seventy-five percent. So we want to make sure when we can use CARES Act, we use it first, then it's a hundred percent, and then the, the, the failsafe will be the, the P A, uh, reimbursement as well. So we are tracking any, any preventative measures with our custodians for sanitation due to COVID, so.
All right, thank you. All right, seventeen is the vote to procure the annual fire extinguisher inspections, a fifteen thousand. Um, that's pretty standard, that's just an annual renewal. Would that be you, Kim, if anybody had any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, we'll ask Kim. Okay. And item eighteen is an annual renewal of the Q C N and Q Alert software licensing, twelve thousand eighty-nine dollars. Would that be you or Jeff, Kim?
That's Jeff.
Jeff? Um, might as well have, uh, Jeff, if you're back there, can you hear me? You want to come in? You got the next three items. See somebody moving around? Is he here? He is here? Counsel, while we're waiting, I'm going to jump to, nope, here he comes. So Jeff, we're on item fifteen, the annual renewal of the Q C N and Q Alert software licensing from Q C N Technologies, cost of twelve thousand eighty-nine dollars.
Yes, let's say.
Same price as it, as it's been?
Right, yeah, it's just, uh, it's our, really our, I guess our first renewal of that, uh, Q Alert three-one-one system where residents can, uh, uh, open up tickets for many number of things.
Okay. Well, how many, what is that, a three-year contract?
Was it, uh, Kim, do you remember? Believe it, yes, it was a three-year contract.
Yeah, it's not a one-year contract.
No, no, no.
Okay. All right, while she's looking that up, um, I believe, counsel, you are aware of an I T security consultant and the services available for direct procurement from C D W government through Sourcewell. This was discussed last meeting, item nineteen. Do you all need Jeff to expand on that? Okay. And item twenty, I know it's a big budget item, but that's the same, related to that as well, I T consulting services, three years, um, from C D W government. Jeff is also the contact for that. Uh, that's roughly seventy thousand a year for the I T consulting services that I believe counsel agreed was needed at the last meeting, is that correct? Do you have any questions about that? Jeff, anything you want to say about that?
I believe we covered it in the last, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be.
We covered it pretty well last meeting. Okay. I think that's it.
Okay, um, when the agenda item comes up, I'll find out about that contract.
That's fine. As long as it wasn't a one-year, I mean, if we, if we entered into a multi-year contract, then the service agreement was part of that anyway, so that's kind of why I asked.
Right, okay.
On the documents, Josh, you have also, um, it is just going, this is the licensing rule from, for one year, that's going to be for one year.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. All right, counsel, item twenty-one is a resolution to adopt a compensation job classification plan. The grade order sheet be amended and approved to add the skater technician job position with a pay grade of twenty-five. Uh, one of the things that, um, I want you to consider, counsel, is when you adopt this was, is, uh, whether or not we want to go ahead. It was funded in the last year's budget. Uh, the question would be, do you want to continue that funding or do you want to withhold that funding pending passing of the budget, since we're so close to a, a budget proposal? So I want, want y'all to give that some consideration. Other than that, uh, this is something, we've been talking about for a while. Item twenty-two is the emergency declaration, which we talked about. And then we have an executive session to discuss, uh, some pending litigation. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn and try to get back here in five minutes.